Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this December 3 meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Here. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Today, leading us in prayer, we have Chaplain Matt Kearney from Street Chaplains that's going to lead us in prayer this evening. Chaplain Kearney, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, let us pray. God, you are gracious, God who is slow to anger and abounding in loving kindness. We thank you for that, and we welcome you here. And we thank you for those who are doing good in our community, our first responders, our city employees, our school staff, our businesses, our churches, and other nonprofits, and the people of Zion who call it home and want to see the city prosper. Would you please help our most vulnerable and our poor in this season? In this time of year, we remember when you came down to our planet and to help us understand our struggles, to teach us, and to save us from our sins. Would you save people from dying and deliver them from their troubles this season? Lastly, I thank you for those on this council who sacrificed so much and worked tirelessly not only to run the city, but to see it grow. We humbly ask for your divine wisdom and inspiration to guide their conversations and the decisions they make tonight. We ask for your blessing on this city. Give us your hope, your peace, unity, and help this city prosper so that all may be blessed. And may we all have a Merry Christmas and happy holiday season. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes?
No.
If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is public hearing on the tax levy. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries. Turned over to Administrator Nabel.
I'll jump right in here. So, the plan is to adopt our levy. We have to file it by the end of December, last Tuesday of December, I think, with the county. So, though we're not required to have a public hearing because we're not going over the 5% by state statute, we historically have done this just as a transparency measure and to be able to discuss openly the directions that we're going with our levies. The plan being to actually approve the levy at the next, the December 17 council meeting. What you have before you is kind of what you're typically used to seeing, which is what would happen under a maximum levy scenario, where I'm going to try and summarize a very complicated issue here with property taxes, but there's something called PTEL, Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, that we could go up either by Consumer Price Index or 5%, whichever is lower. This year, that's 3.4% that we could use. So, we can only go up 3.4% on the levy if we chose to max the levy. So, what that would mean is our extension last year was 8.7 million. We could go up to about 9.2 million, 9,168,000. That would have an impact, obviously, of increasing the city's portion of taxes. Now, there's one correction on the item that you have before you. On the third bullet point, when I talk about the impact on a $200,000 house, values actually went up on our EAV about 14% this year, not 9.5 that's in there. And the max of the levy would have, on a $200,000 home, would have an increase of about $60 a year to the city. So, that would be the annual impact, just to put it in perspective for people on what maxing it would be. Now, I say all of that, and there's a lot more information there on the breakdown of where that levy would go to and the different factors, but we also have the factor of SGA funds. When we sought out these funds, the purpose, and this is our nuclear funding that we get from the state for being a, basically, an interim storage site, the intent was to replace the tax, property taxes that were lost by the closure of that plant, and the impact was passed through to our residents and businesses, which resulted in, obviously, higher tax bills. So, we were trying to alleviate that. We received some of our first round of funding. Our first round allocation was $2 million. We have actually received a million and a half of that. And initial discussions were talking up to, potentially up to 75% of what we received going to reduce our levies. The challenge with that is this PTEL law says you can increase the 3.4% based on your highest levy over the past three years. If we reduce that levy, that locks us in future at that base amount. So, you kind of lose that compounding increase in perpetuity over time, which we talked about. We are willing to take that risk and make those decisions, but we are also looking at this having a collective impact, community-wide. So, I say all of that, and you can feel free to stop me anytime, but I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. If we take roughly 2/3 of the million and a half, and I just say a million dollars, and instead of going to this 9.2, max levy, we go to 8.2 and basically reduce that levy by a million dollars, that would have an impact of savings on a $200,000 home of about $80 a year. So, instead of a $60 increase, it would be an $80 decrease over existing. The challenge with that is we would lose out on the $400,000 in new revenue, but we'd lose out on that $400,000 every subsequent year. We're only 15% of the property tax bill, so even if we eliminated our levy altogether, tax bills would only go down 15%. So, that $80 decrease, if the schools who make up the majority, and it's not unique in Zion, it's across the state, schools make up the majority, but if they increase their levy, they're going to go up for $500 in taxes, and people's tax bills will still go up even though the city's portion decreased. So, we're still working to try and collectively get everyone on board with using these funds to reduce taxes. That $80 decrease is not going to have the impact that we want for the SGA funds as a whole, but it is what we talked about doing. It is what we, you know, we discussed if we were successful, which miracle of miracles we were successful in getting those SGA funds passed. So, I would say that we could still levy the 8.2 million, and then, because there's a lot of uncertainty with the state and when we're going to receive funding and whether it's going to be available year after year, that we revisit this on an annual basis. Knowing that we're passing on that increase, that compounding increase in year one, whether we lock ourselves into that long-term, we'll have to revisit and see what happens. But that is a, you know, we'll have to make do with the budget, figure out how to do without that $400,000, but we do have SGA funds to supplement some of the decrease, you know, a million dollars of that going back. So, we still have $500,000 net to offset some of that, that passing on the increase. So, it's a lot thrown at you there that's, believe it or not, that's the 30,000-foot view without digging into a lot of the specifics of it, but it really is a tough decision to put us in a position financially in future because our costs are still going to go up. We still experience inflation, just like everyone else, and one of our only ways of offsetting some of that is through increases in levies. But if we're going to kind of be the example of living within our means and doing what we said, I think we can make that work at least for a year and see how it evolves over time. But I'm looking for direction from the council on this because ultimately, there are pros and cons either way that are tough to swallow.
Would looking at it from a short-term or year standpoint give us an opportunity to see what the new administration is going to roll out in terms of how that's going to impact us financially nationwide?
I don't know that we'll see, and I'll have a magic eight ball on that, I don't know that we'll see that impact within, like, a year to make the decision, but it's, I am not a, you know, master economist, and there is a lot of talk out there, both in all ways, on what the new administration is going to do economically. I think we have to make the decision based on the best facts known to us for our operations, and a lot of that stuff is already, 82% of our expenses are in salaries and benefits, and a lot of that's already defined by contract, insurance renewals, things like that, which we know and are manageable. The remaining 18% of our budget of fuel and things like that, I don't think that's going to have as big of a swing to put us in the black or the red one way or another, honestly. But we'll be able to revisit that next year and see, make decisions based on the trends that are happening. I don't know if that stresses it.
So, option two is applying SGA funds, looks like not exactly all of it, but the majority of it to the police pension. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, because we can't, we can't take it from the million dollars from other places. You know, our corporate levy is down to 138,000. We can't do it there. So, we would take it off of the minimum levy, the minimum required amount that we're levying from here, and we would just fund that with general funds at that point. So, we would still fund the minimum required into pension. We just wouldn't do that all through.
Right. It would be, I mean, we would levy a million less because we're going to, we're not, we still are paying our minimum to the pension.
Correct.
It's just we're getting the funds, not through the levy, through the SGA grant.
And I talked to Director Conway about that, and we would probably just pay that million proportionally to when we receive the dispersments from the county. So, we get, let's say, half in June and half in September, we would do $500 in additional over the dispersments to the police pension fund in both those periods.
And that amount is mandated, the minimum is mandated, so we really, it's not the same as if we were going to be behind in a levy, starting at a lower number because we're, this amount is mandated.
Well, and as you can see from the option-one table before that million dollars is taken into account, the police pension minimum went up 288,000, and the fire pension minimum went up 228,000. So, just those two went up together 500,000. Even if we max the levy, we can only get 430,000. So, this has been a challenge we've had in the past where we're maxing levy, but we're actually losing money to operate off of because the minimum required by the pension.
Have you calculated the tax, what the tax rate for the city of Zion would be with this option two?
I knew you were going to ask that, and it's on my computer, but I think it was like 1.6, the low 1.6.
Could that be a decrease?
Yeah. So, the rate, because of property values going up 14%, even if we max, the rate would go down. That's one of the fallacies when you hear people talk about tax rates going down. Tax rates would go down just based on property values going up. So, tax rates going down doesn't mean you pay less. It just means you pay less as a percentage of the value of the house. So, the rate would go from 2.025 down to 1.855 under a max. It'd go down to 1.6, even more so with the million dollars.
Okay. Just as a follow-up on that, so, under option two, with the offset to the police pension, the million-dollar offset, but how does that, how would that impact that compounding effect on PTEL? Would it have the same effect, or would that, how would that impact it differently than option one?
So, we could go, instead of going to 9.2 million this year?
Right.
We would basically be able to go to 9.2 million next year instead, because our base would be, instead of 9.2 next year, our base would go back to the 8.7. So, 2025's levy would look very similar to option one here. We're just, we're losing that $400,000 starting point.
Okay.
So, what we increase percentages of in future years is going to be based off of starting point of 8.7, not 9.2. So, that's where it comes in, but that's, you know, if we go to, you know, anything under 8.7 million, 8.7 million is our highest in the prior three years, that's what we'll be able to go back to regardless of what we levy. So, anything under that, 8.7 is what we can go back to to build off of.
Right.
So, we're missing out on that one-year increase of 435,000 for future years, and we're offsetting that with the remainder excess of the SGA funds. Like I said, we got a million and a half, we're reducing a million and the 400,000 loss, but this 9.2 would basically be deferred a year. And we could have gone to 9.6 maybe next year if we did 9.2 now, but...
I don't want to say this is a guarantee, but we do have the SGA grant next year and the year after that. I mean...
Well, they have, the state has to have budgeted appropriate for it every year.
Right.
They have released the second round of funding, which we've applied for, but we haven't been approved.
Right.
So, and we received, when did we receive the million and a half?
September.
So, we received the million and a half in September of this year. That was for July of 2023. So, we have a 12- to 18-month where we spend the money and we wait. We're hoping that gets better as we learn this process, but that's not, we have to plan that it's not going to. So, anything that the state has never guaranteed, but we do have the second round of funding released.
Another question for you, David. So, say we went with option one. Is there, and we have this delay in getting the SGA funds. Can we levy that amount and then abate a portion?
So, abating just brings, so you have your levy minus what you abate is your extension.
Okay.
And what you could go off of for prior years is the highest three, the prior three years of extension, not levy.
Okay.
So, reducing the levy really doesn't, versus increasing and abating, doesn't really protect that, that floor like it should.
Okay.
It's, an abatement is a one-year, like you levy it, but you say, okay, we got a windfall of some funding that we hadn't planned on.
So, we don't need to, yeah, we can abate.
Right. But anytime you do an abatement, you are passing potentially on a future compounding factor.
Okay. So, it basically, either way, you're going to get, you're going to get impacted by that, by that compounding factor over the three-year limit for PTEL.
Yeah. And there's different schools of thought on that from government. I come from more of a public finance side than a government side, and I think, I personally think abatements are kind of playing with the numbers a little bit rather than just reducing your levy. I think it has the same long-term effect, but it's, when you talk rates and you talk abatements, that's two pieces of a three-piece formula that if you're not talking the full formula, you're not getting the full picture.
Okay.
I think you're going to abate, just, you should just reduce your levy personally, but...
The other factor is, this is how we said we were going to use the SGA money.
Correct.
So, I think we should follow through with that, and that is the agreement that we have with all the other taxing bodies. Is that correct?
No. That is the, well, I'll say that's the gentleman's agreement that we have with all the other taxing bodies.
That's what was put out there, and this is how...
We put that out there, and Mr. Farrarson and I were actually talking about this before. We said we'd be willing to pass on, we'd reduce our levy, and we'd be willing to pass on this inflationary increase if we got the benefit of the SGA funds, not just the city SGA funds.
Yeah.
So, we're willing to take this loss or pass on this if we have this large benefit to the community. When it's just us, we're taking the hit and we're not getting as big of a bang as we wanted under the whole thing. We're still working on that, but we talked about doing that if, as a whole, we did this. So, it's like, it still is our intent that we're only accountable to ourselves.
Yeah.
So, it's just, that's why I wanted to have all the information, that it's an $80 decrease. People may not see their tax bills go down. They'll see the city's portion of their tax bill go down on that, but when you're cutting the check and it's $300 more than last year, I don't know that that really matters other than not adding more to it.
So, you listed the nine different functions. Are there any limits within those nine buckets separate from the overall PTEL limit?
Yes, there's levy limits, levy rate limits within each of those except for fire pension, I don't believe is capped, but none of these are over those limits. So, you have, we have our street and bridge, ambulance fund, liability insurance, IRF, Social Security, the pension funds, and then our general fund. Each of those has a limiting rate on it in addition to your overall levy cap going up. These are not at, there's still room there. We're limited by our overall.
Okay.
Overall levy. So, again, this is just direction for us to prepare the levy to bring back at the December 17 meeting because we don't want to put it in front of you at the last opportunity to vote on it and then not have input, be able to build in.
Well, I agree with the direction of dealing with what's right in front of us and sticking to the original intent and the proposed agreement that was put out there. So, thank you for putting this together.
So, kind of along the route of the option two.
Yeah. You want to levy?
Yep.
Okay. Million-dollar reduction.
At least for a year.
And I don't know if a public hearing will be about two to public.
All right. So, at this point, are there any more questions from the commissioners?
What, Commissioner Holmes, if we have a general consensus of...
Yeah, we do. I was just going to say, thank you, David, for putting all this together. It's very complicated, as we well know.
Well, Chris put a lot of it together. Director Conway, I just take the credit.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this? Mr. Bremer?
Administrator Nabel, perhaps, have asked you this eight years past, I don't remember. The city is limited, this year 3.4%. Are the other 17 or 18 taxing bodies, whatever that it is, are they also limited, or can I do whatever they want?
They're, they're under the same limitations. So, what you'll sometimes see is, say, people say, and you were at the Dollars and Cents meeting where we talked about tax caps, like, new construction is one of those things where it's like, you can go up 3.4% on the existing base, but then you can also add any taxes for new construction that might put you over that 3.4% or 5% cap. So, you'll have taxing bodies say, hey, we're passing a levy that might be 7% increase, and they'll have to follow their regulations on, you know, publishing that and everything, but that doesn't mean that it's going to necessarily translate into a 7% increase for, the county may still come along and say, hey, we're going to reduce that back down to 3.4. One of the challenges we have here is that we're required to pass a levy based on values that we have from the county as of, when did we get those? September, was it April? So, but the board review process for appeals and value adjustments and stuff isn't done until like February, March of next year. So, you kind of build in something there where values could go up or down. Well, on our levies, we can't go up on what we file, but the county will tell us you have to adjust down. So, a lot of times, a levy will be passed at a higher amount than you actually expect you're going to get because those values might still be in flux at the county level. We have to do our best to estimate what might happen four months from now. But in answer to your question, I went into probably more detail than you wanted there, the PTEL cap and the individual funding cap do apply to all the other taxing bodies as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments from...
I'm sorry to have to leave. Have you decided how much you're going to abate?
We're not going to abate, we're just going to reduce the levy.
Okay.
So, that's, we were talking about, our option two that we were talking about is a million-dollar reduction.
Okay.
So, we're taking about 2/3 of what we received under the SGA funds, we received a million and a half, actually reimbursed, not what we're going to receive, and said we're going to take a million and reduce the levy by that amount.
Is there anywhere this is documented, so in the future, it's known and published that you've done this?
Other than at the county reports or any press releases or anything that we choose to put out.
Because I think it's important to keep track of it.
It is, it is. But we won't have that until we actually pass the levy at the next meeting to be able to put it out there.
And for all intents and purposes, it is tracked at the county. They hold the PTAC for every year, and they show what was extended for each taxing body.
Yeah, I think if you go to the, if you just Google "Lake County property tax extensions", they have the 2005, I think, historical extensions for every taxing body in the state or in the county, so...
They have the extensions, but they don't give abatements?
Yeah. Well, the extension is levy minus abatement. So, it's fact, any abatements are factored into that, the extension.
All right. Any additional comments or questions from, all right. With that being said, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. Motion by Fisher, second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrarson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number six is Citizen Comments, Mary Lou Hildebrand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. During the month of November, your volunteers gave 108 and a half hours of service for a value to the city of $3,634. Members assisted the police department at two traffic accidents and picked up traffic equipment from Dungeon and Doom at the end of their season. We performed a monthly side... of Doom at the end of their season. We performed a monthly sirens test in the city and the Yerdy Blackback Flow Test at the center. Members participated in training and held our monthly meeting. We assisted at the food pantry at New Tech Marketing Lot and performed maintenance duties at the center. Volunteering to help our city is rewarding, and we would love to welcome you to our team. If you have a desire to make a difference, please fill out an application on the city website or call via the center at 847-872-5511, and we will get back to you as soon as possible. Thank you for your continued support.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lou, and the ESTA crew for all that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Wendy Driver?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am the chaplain for Little Fort, Daughters of the American Revolution, and this summer we celebrated our 100th anniversary. Daughters of the American Revolution, what we do is we not only commemorate our American Revolutionary War patriots, but we also promote patriotism, conservation of our memorials, and also education. Thank you. But what I'm here today to do is to present to you with a flag that was flown over Constitution Hall, the Daughters of the American Revolution National Headquarters in Washington, DC. It is a building that takes up an entire city block and is the, here's a little fact for you, it's the all-women-owned building, the largest of its type in the world that is owned by women only. It was built in 19, I mean, yeah, 1929, and pretty much this place has been hosts, dignitaries from around the world, presidents, concerts are performed there, and, you know, you too, Frank Zappa, all sorts of other big names have been there. But this is a very important flag that I'm going to be presenting to you on behalf of Daughters of the American Revolution, Little Fort chapter.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want to say, get a picture?
Oh, no.
My hubby.
Oh, let me come down and get a picture with you.
Here's a camera now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. We have Muriel Adams for a short presentation.
I brought these boards to move things along quicker. Last year, Councilman McDowell asked me to come and speak about restorative justice. My organization is One World, shared future community labs. We brought together, we started a program called Reimagine Zion, and we brought together for five weeks a group of individuals who focused on cohesion building, capacity building, talking about how to remove silos that people have gotten into, and to bring people together to face major issues like climate change and the impacts of climate change. From those beginnings, we used restorative justice just to build camaraderie, but to also build a feeling of neighbors because of the, sometimes the brokenness in families due to incarceration or addictions or all of these different factors, we felt like we needed to come together and just talk about it. And so we used the restorative justice, many people call it restorative peace circles, or sometimes you hear it as a healing circle. We finally came to a decision to use stickups, stickups, or whatever they're called.
Postits.
Postits, I'm sorry, to just bring our thoughts together. So individuals in the group answered five questions, focused on five questions, things I love about Zion, things I wish were better in Zion, things we need in Zion, and then the kids got involved. They put in information on, kids speak out what we love and what we need. And they came up with, the whole group came up with a vision for Zion, to create an environment that is inclusive, safe, equitable, and welcoming. Our mission to collaborate with all levels of community. So we did everything in Spanish. That's why they have two posters here, one in English and one in Spanish. There, one of the main things that people asked was, or comments that they made were, that they had not been asked questions like this before. We also used, I want to mention the Community Hub, the Coalition for Healthy Communities. We did, I did a presentation, a longer presentation on that, I believe that was in July. So that focuses a little bit more in depth on what was covered in the, or in the group. But after doing all of this, we, people were asking, well, what are you gonna do with it? So when I started here with Councilman McDowell, I felt like I needed to return to show you this is the work that the community did, and I gathered the data together so that you, that the councilman and the mayor would be able to see what individuals who don't usually have a voice or don't feel that they have a voice, what they are saying. And I thought it was very interesting, some of the things that they talked about, everybody loved Zion, and I loved the people of Zion. And that was, and I felt that warmth and that feeling of caring. But some of the things were, hearing about property taxes, lower property taxes was one, affordable housing, more stuff for kids and skating rinks, health programs. But some of the things, things we need in Zion, community dancing events, some of these things are not major things that you have to do in a community, but they do make a major difference. I think Zion needs a water park, rape survivor support groups, boy and girls, girl and boy, boy and girl scout troops. We need community groups for young people and one for older people. Some of these things were just things that you don't necessarily think of, but they were coming and they were writing these things down on postits. So I just wanted to share with everybody else how it went. We just used postits where individuals walked up and put down the information. We are going to, because I don't have much time, I did want to say that we are going to start an urban steward, water stewardship program in the spring, focused on individuals, a cohort of 12 people from Zion, and hopefully a cohort from Waukegan of 12, and also from North Chicago, focused on Waukegan River, the water sheds. A lot of focus will be on the Great Lakes because the Great Lakes have 20% of the water, the fresh water. And right now, Chicago has brought, or there's an organization called Renew, and they got a $160 million grant. And so because Zion is located on the waterfront, I believe that they should have a voice in what's going on related to the lakefront and clean water issues. And so the program is about education, but it's also about adult learning. The program is focused on people, individuals 20 to 40 years old. And it will be a paying program where we pay the participants for completing the program. The program will be probably six to eight weeks. We're hoping for eight weeks.
Okay.
So I just wanted to leave this with you. I don't know if, I wanted you to see it in a orderly fashion. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number seven is consent agenda, and Chief Burton, thank you for removing those displays.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on November 19, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell.
Second.
Second by Frierson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip.
Bills vouchers 147260 through 147363 drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total $1,895,464.20.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight, consider passing resolution as follows, authorizing, eight A is authorizing the City of Zion to apply to the Lake County Community Development Block Grant Program for assistance replacing sidewalks located within the City of Zion, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Staff to your memo is the resolution that the city is required to pass for the supplemental application for the 2025 Lake County Community Development Block Grant. Staff is seeking grant assistance from Lake County for sidewalk replacement and installation of ADA ramps at various locations throughout the city. If this grant is approved, the grant will provide $80,000 towards an estimated $115,000 project. Staff requests and recommends approval for the Lake County CBD and D resolution.
Is there a motion to pass the resolution?
So moved.
So motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions, comments? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item nine, consider passing ordinances as follows. Nine A, authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement with members of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority and the City of Zion per Administrator Knabel.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner? About six years ago, the Lake County Land Bank was formed. Since then, they've been kind of getting things off the ground, seeking out funding, things of that nature. Pretty small organization to start, that was staffed primarily by one individual who accepted a position elsewhere, unfortunately. As a result, for the scaling of operations, the attorney for the Lake County Land Bank said, reach out to, can you, you should reach out to Northern Illinois Land Bank, NILB, to see if they could incorporate the Lake County representation and functions into their organization. They have a lot more experience handling this, more resources, and more staff. They were, they responded positively and said we'll expand our board by two to make sure that Lake County has a voice in their land bank issues as well. But I think it's an opportunity to gain a lot more knowledge and experience than we had just at the Lake County Land Bank. So the IGA basically sets out the term, just saying, the Lake County Land Bank will be transferred over to the Northern Illinois Land Bank, and then in January, January we'll come back for appointments of the two members to that board. So I recommend approval of the IGA as presented.
All right. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Fisher, echoed by McDowell. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Is, do we have to, is there a membership fee for this?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
I think that's just covered by their funding sources, that they go for grants and things like that.
Okay, but we will be providing, there'll be members appointed to represent Lake County?
Right. For us to provide votes and representation for Lake County to the Northern Illinois Land Bank.
Okay.
Make sure we have, we have a voice with them.
Is there a mechanism for providing, for nominees for that, for those positions? How are the, how are these two representatives from Lake County gonna be chosen?
We will listen to anyone who is interested while we consider options as well, and they'll just come before our council, just like appointments to our commissions and things like that.
Yeah. Commissioner McDowell, I was involved with the initial land bank, Commissioner Frierson, I talked about that several years ago, and it had some challenges with funding, and we've been very involved with it. Time of Lido's been involved, I've been involved with it. So we'll be able to, I believe, be able to put a member on it to make sure that things are looked at here. Thanks. All right. Any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item nine B, authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement in the acquisition and transfer of real property from Zion School District Number Six to the City of Zion per Administrator Knabel.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, you haven't heard enough from me tonight, but this and the next three items are mine as well. But this item and the next item both relate to the Start Early Project, the education facility that we're happy to say is locating in Zion, Illinois. It feels like we've talked a lot about it, but also haven't talked enough about it because it's a huge, huge benefit to our community. But part of that process is a lot of governmental logistics that go with this, and this item is for District Six to basically transfer the land where the facility is gonna be located between Central and.
Shiloh Park.
Shiloh School. There's, was it about four or five acres in between there that's being rendered out for the footprint for this facility. But the city can enter into a lease then for the operation of that facility there with less restrictions than is under law an elementary school district can. So the first step, which is the next item, the lease, but the first step is for District Six to transfer that land to the city under the conditions that it be operated for an education facility. So I recommend approval of the IGA.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the IGA? So moved. Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? I'll just say it's great for the community, gonna be great for our young kids to get the early educational help that they, they need, and it's also going to help beautify the area. Now that they'll have the new facility there and the building, the Healya Building across the street is being torn down as we speak right now, it's really gonna renovate that area and make it look much, much nicer. So, all right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine C, authorizing a lease of real property for early childhood services for the City of Zion, real property generally located between Zion Central Middle School and Shiloh Park Middle School, per Administrator Knabel.
Thank you, again. This is the lease I just mentioned with Start Early, obviously contingent upon the transfer being finalized, and we approved at a prior meeting the redevelopment agreement with Start Early that spells out kind of the platters of division and the uses and all that stuff. So this is just the lease for the terms of the use of that land, formalizing what we kind of already put in the RDA. So this is just the ground lease between us and them, contingent on the transfer of the land to the city from District Six, which was the last item that you just approved. So I would recommend. So I would recommend approving the lease between the City of Zion and Start Early Corporation as presented.
All right, is there a motion to approve the lease?
All move to approve.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Fryerson. Questions or comments?
How soon do they expect to start construction, do you know?
Yesterday, if they had to. We have representatives from the, here.
Commissioner, we're hoping to start construction in spring, spring twenty-one.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. That's why you're looking at me like that. Had a quick sidebar with council.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item nine D, authorizing and approving the purchase of, transfer of real property from the Zion Park District to the City of Zion pertaining to fire station number two, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor commissioners. We're well underway on the process of the design and construction of new fire station two. At prior meetings, we've talked about this, but the current station two on Lewis is very dilapidated. We joked that they had a nice water feature when it rains, because it leaks through the sky roof, and not, not the ideal situation. But we were looking at locations for both response times and that meet requirements for elevations, accessibility, things of that nature. And there was some land that was owned by the Park District that was conveyed to them with a conservatorship, which, the, meeting, meeting the public use requirement to that conservatorship that we talked with the, the individual that conveyed it over. He's in support of the, the construction of the station there. But this lays out the terms of basically them selling us the property there, about four and a half acres, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so that we can construct there, and the architects and engineers can move forward that site for their design and implementation.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the purchase and transfer of the real property from Zion Park District to the City of Zion?
Make the motion.
Motion by McDowell, and second by Fryerson. Questions or comments?
In terms of our due diligence period, what all do we need to cover in terms of that? And particularly, I'm thinking of some of the traffic I've seen kind of backed up there at one seventy-three in Lewis.
Well, that, that'll be part of the, the design and engineering on that, when they'll, they'll look at. So right next to the property, there's a right-of-way that we're looking at, is already plotted that will use as the main entrance for that. And then when we do a traffic study during the process, we'll determine whether there's deceleration lanes needed. There's already a width there for that. But the impact will be determined during the design. But, and then we'll probably have to signal and stripe just for emergency exit, you know, entrance and exit if, with equipment going in and out of there, which will be another process to go through. But I don't anticipate a major interruption to, to traffic there.
Thank you.
Specifically, Commissioner, just to add to that, there is a preemptive device on that intersection, one seventy-three Lewis, but this station's property is located almost between Lewis Avenue and Kenosha, Kenosha. It's almost right in the middle there, so we don't anticipate a lot of runway obstruction and issue there. But of course, the, the, the early conversation we all had was that same question. So thank you for that question, because we recognize that was a, a need that we need to make sure that our community is safe as, as entrances made through that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it's due to the holidays, but I've seen that kind of backup from Lewis, about halfway back to the gas station, and that feels a little, little new. And so when I'm thinking about, you know, a truck trying to get in and out and not affect response times, that, that's what spurred the thought.
Sure.
So, thank you.
All right, any other additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine E, authorizing the conveyance of, or disposition of real property located within a redevelopment project area in Trumpet Park, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you for the last time, Mayor commissioners, tonight. So we've been in the process of executing our option with North Shore Sanitary, or North Shore Water Reclamation District to close on property in Trumpet Park for the purposes of, you know, industrial development in that area. There is a developer we've been working with that is interested in the northernmost section west of Trumpet Drive, about twenty-one acres for a large development. Can't disclose who the developer is yet. We'll do that when we get to the redevelopment agreement. But this spells out the conveyance of that land to them for development. It does have the contingencies in there to say, "We do have to enter into a subsequent redevelopment agreement that spells out any terms, incentives, targets that need to hit, and what their obligations are as well." So this transfer does not happen if we don't close on the property with North Shore, which we will, on Friday is the scheduled plan. And if we don't come to terms on a redevelopment agreement, then this becomes, this basically goes away. But this is the first step so that they can start the process of layout, designing of their facilities and things like that. So we look forward to sharing a lot more of the, the news of this development going forward. But I would recommend the agreement, the purchase and sale agreement as presented.
All right, is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Motion by Fisher? Second. Second by Fryerson. Questions or comments?
So this is just step one?
Yes.
So we got a ways to go yet.
Yeah, and it will close on February fourteenth. The close, there's a closing on Friday with North Shore, and then on February fourteenth, the other closing will take place. And this has been a long-awaited process that we've been working on for a couple of years now. So again, thank you everyone that's been working on this. It's been quite a chore, to say the least. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number ten is departmental commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. You mentioned the Healya Building. The building is down during the process of taking off the foundation and bringing it built and doing a utility disconnect, so it should be in the next couple of weeks to see if completed as well.
Yeah, I've been driving by on a pretty regular basis and taking pictures of the demolition process, and I saw that they were filling, filling some of the foundation part of it today as well as taking it out. So that's, it just makes a big difference with that building not being there. So addition by subtraction. All right, Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Kind of an update for a question that the council threw at me last, last meeting. I have had conversations with the I dot engineer. He is telling me that they are anticipating opening Sheridan Road this Friday. If the weather holds out and they're putting in guardrails tomorrow and Friday, then they're hoping to have that.
Friday, December sixth, correct?
Don't do it.
Right.
Yeah. Well, that's great news. I know a lot of people are looking forward to that. And restoring the, and restoring the regular traffic pattern.
I don't know. Stay away from that one. I also have had communications, I have an update with Lake County School of Water Management on her twentieth street project that we requested a grant on, the five million dollar grant. The first phase, DECO has sent and received an agreement from DECO, from the state, approving phase one of this project. They're anticipating going out to bid in January, February of next year. So that's phase one with the Blue Park up to the intersection of Gideon and Twentieth, Twentieth Street. They're still looking at phase two of that, possibly be, being funded by the end of this year. So we should start seeing some movement over there. And that's replacing that, upgrading that storm line from a twelve inch to a seventy-eight inch. That'll take some of that flooding away from that area.
Yeah, that, we
Also involved in that is we are replacing a new sanitary and a new water panel there also.
All right.
That's great.
That is, that is great news, because we know that area has a lot of issues when we get a lot of water on one seventy-three, because the water comes from Winter Harbor as well, so. Nice job.
I'm done. You keep looking at me like I need to say more, I'm done.
Quit while you're ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that one alone. Chief Tree?
Evening, Mayor commissioners. The only reminder I have for tonight is we're into the Christmas season. And for those of you who put up real Christmas trees, which are nice and pretty, remember to water them, please. There's some really outstanding videos on YouTube, if you want to take a couple of minutes, of how fast a dry Christmas tree can go up in flames, it's a matter of seconds really. So keep them watered and enjoy your holiday season.
All right, thank you, Chief Tree. Chief Barton?
Mr. Mayor and commissioners, thank you. Just wanted to highlight, I know you're going to talk about it here shortly, but Shop With A Cop this weekend, Saturday morning. We intend to be out there. We partnered with a number of partners again this year, and I want to just give thanks to those folks. Walmart, Pepsi, Comet, North Shore Gas, to name a few. We, we, some local businesses, CJ's and, and our, our Starbucks. I know it's not a local business, but it is a chain that, that is willing to participate and eager to do so. They are going to be providing some, some stuff. We have thirty, excuse me, thirty-seven families that we intend on working with this year and highlighting some of the Christmas spirit. So I'm cautiously optimistic that it won't be as crazy as it was last year, but if any of you attended last year, we probably had, I don't even know, a hundred and fifty or so, maybe more people show up that were participating in the event, but also helping in some ancillary fashion. And again, this year, we'll have a fire department. We'll have some fire, fire, fires helping us with wrapping some gifts. The high school is bringing on some, some folks from, from the Health and Youth. The NJ ROTC program is eagerly wanting to participate again. So we anticipate a good turnout again this year. I think we're, I think we scaled back to fires, like, as I said, fires, to maybe a quartet this year. Last year, that was, yeah, but it was a good time and quite a few, few people showing up. So thank you to those. And then just one more safety reminder. I've noticed this on my own while I'm riding around. There have been a number of people without their headlights on while driving, and just a reminder, it is dark out earlier, and sometimes you're, if you don't, if you have automatic lights, sometimes those automatic lights get bumped, and they look like your lights are on in the interior of the vehicle when they're in fact not outside. So just a reminder to take a second look at those and make sure you have your headlights on like that.
Chief, what times does a shop with a cop start?
I prefer not to say, because I don't want a bunch of people showing up that we're on it, we're not invited, if you don't mind.
Okay.
We had that issue last year, people showed up with, that, that weren't invited, and it kind of created a bit of issue.
Okay. Well, you'll tell me privately, so if I can show up? All right.
Your invite might be in the mail.
Oh, the other thing I wanted to say about talking about safety, I think our last city council meeting, after the city council meeting, there was a, a really bad crash at Ninth Street and Green Bay Road, and it's been a problem area. And I've had several residents call me about it or text me about it, inbox me with Facebook. And it's a county road, and Chief and I were talking about it that evening, that we are going to be talking to the county about what we can do to reduce accidents there, because there's been several there over the last several years.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very unfortunate, and I called you, I was on scene when I called you, and, you know, that's, that's a struggle, an intersection, it's a very dark road. I know that the county has the intent, or I believe the intent is to widen that road several years from now, but in the meantime, I, you know, maybe we can get some additional lighting out there. The, the shoulders of the roads are just not very well kept, and, and it looks, maybe that makes it look a little bit darker, I'm not sure. But we're gonna, I'm, I'm also, we're compiling some information to look at some statistics to provide to our, to our elected officials downstate also, so that they have a little bit of data in front of them, and we can, we can show how dangerous in fact it is. Because frankly, it feels like every crash we go there is, is a major injury or fatal. And, and that's, and it's not what nobody ever wants to see. So, you know, it's, it's a dangerous road. We thank our firefighters and paramedics again, and as though, thank you for coming out that evening. It was very cold that night, for some reason. It was, it was very cold. So we were, we were all standing, standing out there freezing all these, while our firefighters were attempting life-saving measures that evening.
Yeah, speaking of cold, it was really cold this morning, and I saw some of the public works, members of the Public Works Department dealing with some of the fire hydrants, and just appreciation for our, our city employees that have to work in the cold. It's, it's not easy, but these things have to be done as we go into holiday season and possibly snow. One of the reminders that I would always say is, in your neighborhood, get somebody to take ownership of the fire hydrant, so that they are clear in the event that there is a fire in your neighborhood. It can, it's a life-saving measure, can, so the fire department can get there and hook up their hoses and get the fire put out, instead of having to shovel out, and then might be too late. So thanks, your crew and the other crew that are always out in this cold weather. It's not the greatest time to be out. Director Conway?
Good evening to all of you. I just wanted to say thank you for the time you guys took to review all that levy information. And it was a lot of numbers, a lot of percentages, all that kind of stuff. Thankfully, David was the one who could present all that out loud, and all I had to do was type it up. But it, it's greatly appreciated. You guys took the time, you looked at all the data, you made decisions based on what was best for the city, and it is greatly appreciated.
All right, well, thank you for all of your, your work too. And while David said he didn't give you the credit, he did, because he acknowledged you did the work unselfishly.
Not enough.
Yeah. Director Nabel?
I just have, believe it or not, one item after all of that. But about two weeks ago, just shy of two weeks ago, we intervened on an application for the City of Hope. They were going for a property tax exemption, which would have had an impact to the community of about four point eight million dollars of lost taxes, lost tax revenue. And we intervened at the county level to present why their application was deficient. And for the second year, we prevailed in the board denying their, recommending denying the application. It goes down to Department of Revenue, the State Illinois Department of Revenue, for a final decision, which we will continue to monitor and try and make sure that we have as much input as possible. But we did include all the items, why it was deficient, in the record that they, the state will review, but little David and Goliath were taking on the, the big corporation in California and for the benefit of our community, and we were successful. So we'll keep fighting that fight for our, our businesses and presidents.
And what was great about that too, thanks everyone that did all the work, our attorneys, Dave. We had so many of our residents on Zoom that attended the meeting there. We had residents that showed up and made comments, and all those things made a, a big difference in terms of how they were viewing the application. Just a great job, once again, two years in a row. And we're hoping we don't have to do this every year, but we're preparing for it. All right, Commissioner McDowell?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Holmes?
I do, just want to say, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I know, I know I did, and I just want to say happy holidays.
All right. Commissioner Fryerson?
I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
All right. I'll just go on with the announcements. Item number eleven, on November thirtieth, I was fortunate enough to ride with Santa Claus and the Zion Queens over to the Dowey House. That was November thirtieth. And you can see that on Gibby Buckholz's YouTube page. It was a great event. I don't know, there were probably at least a hundred, hundred and fifty people there to greet Santa Claus, and then to greet Santa Claus, and then just families coming in to visit, and it was just a really nice turnout. The Red Hatters were there, Commissioner Fisher was there, just a really nice event. And you should look at the YouTube video, because it's talking about the, the great jobs that the fire department did with feeding Santa's reindeer while he was giving his sleigh a little rest, and his reindeer a little rest over at the fire department. And he'll be back, Santa Claus will be back on December 7th, and December 14th, and 20, and the 21st, at, at the Dowie House, from 3:00 to 5:00. Again, write that down, December 7th, 14th, and the 24th, 21st, excuse me, Santa will be back at the Dowie House from 3:00 to 5:00, and of course, on 25th, he'll be making his appearances, and I hope I get more than a lump of coal this year. The three queens from Zion were there to greet Santa Claus, Junior Miss Zion, Dior Wilson, Teen Miss Lake County of Zion, Rachel Harvey, and Little Miss Zion, Nia Arias was also there to greet Santa Claus, and it was just, again, just a great community event of a lot of people being there and participating and getting the holiday spirit, spirit. Again, December 7th, the Shop With The Cop, with a hidden time that I will
By end of October.
Course out of Chief Barton at some point. Then on December 13th, at 7:00 PM, there's the Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Zion Park District. That was a great event last year, just another terrific turnout of residents getting together and lighting the Christmas tree over at, at Zion Park District. That's December 13th, 7:00 PM, dress warm. It was cold last year, there was plenty of hot chocolate and treats there, so come out and enjoy a festive environment. And then on December 17th, 6:00 PM, the Zion Township Board Meeting, followed at 7:00 PM by a Zion City Council Meeting. Then on December 24th, 25th, and December 31st, city offices are closed for the holidays, as well as on January 1st. We're starting to, 2025, hard to say.
Your pardon, sir. What were the hours of Santa Claus on the seventh?
3:00 to 5:00. 3:00 to 5:00 PM.
Thank you, sir.
And now, item number 12, closed session. We don't have closed session tonight.
Were you closed?
We have closed session.
Purchase of real estate.
Purchase of real estate, so, yes. We'll go into closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2, open meetings for the discussion of filed pending and or probable or imminent litigation, sale or purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel, and personnel. So thank you for coming out and braving the cold this evening, stay warm, and hopefully we'll see you on December 17th.
So moved.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by McDowell, second by Frierson.